Thank you, everyone, and again, once again, welcome. This is April 11th, 2018. The school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask, is anyone recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself? Having seen none, we'll proceed. First of all, I would like to congratulate two school committee members on their reelection. Congratulations to Mr. Jamie Cutlass for his reelection to school committee and unopposed.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Mr. Dennis Francis, who also ran for school committee and is victorious and is unopposed.
Thank you.
We look forward to another term working with Mr. Cutlass and Mr. Francis during their tenure here at school committee. At this time, I will entertain nominations for the petition of chairperson for the Tewksbury School Committee.
I'll nominate Chrissy Palomino.
The name of Ms. Chrissy Palomino has been placed in nomination. We do have a second from Ms. Bennett. Are there any other nominations for the petition of chairperson? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion that nomination of chairperson be closed.
I'll second.
I'll make the motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. On the name of Ms. Chrissy Palomino, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Palomino, for voting as chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. I guess I get to take over from here. In all my years, I've not had to use the gavel. Let's hope that continues. So, in going forward at this time, I will entertain any nominations for the petition of vice-chairperson of the Tewksbury School Committee.
I will nominate for vice-chair of the Tewksbury School Committee, Artie Bennett.
I'll second.
Okay, the name of Artie Bennett has been placed in nomination, and there's a second made by Jamie Cutlass. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice-chairperson? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion that the nomination for vice-chairperson be closed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion was second and closed. On the name of Artie Bennett, for all those in favor, please by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Congratulations, Mrs. Bennett, as the new vice-chairperson of the Tewksbury School Committee. Okay, continuing on, at this time, I will entertain nominations for the position of clerk of the Tewksbury School Committee.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Cutlass.
Second.
Okay, the name of James Cutlass has been placed in nomination and seconded. It was placed in nomination by Mrs. Bennett and seconded by Mr. Francis. Are there any other nominations for the position of clerk? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion that the nomination for the... At this... Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for the nomination of the clerk be closed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Francis and Mr. Sullivan had a motion and a second. On the name of James Cutlass, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Congratulations, James Cutlass, on the clerk of the Tewksbury School Committee.
Thank you.
So, at this time, the reorganization has occurred. The chairperson for the upcoming year is Chrissy Palomino. The vice-chairperson is Artie Bennett, and the clerk is James Cutlass. We're all looking forward to a wonderful year again on the school committee, and at this time, I'd like someone to adjourn the reorganization meeting.
I'll make that motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting.
And I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. We'll be opening our regular scheduled meeting at 7:15 p.m. Good evening. I would like to call to order the April 11th, 2018 school committee meeting. The time now is 7:01 p.m. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, as we begin our recognition for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, it's a great opportunity tonight to start with some of our recognitions, and first, we want to recognize all those tremendous volunteers that participate in our schools every day, that certainly make it a much better place for our students, and without their help, we would not be able to deliver the education that we do. Whether it's individuals working on the PACs, whether it's individuals working in the library, volunteering, working with students, it's that type work that tells the story in this district, and that type work that gives our school district strength, and certainly, our students are better off for all of their support. I have several names I'd like to read off. Some people were not able to make it, but that's okay. We're still going to recognize them, and I have it down by school, so it's a rather lengthy list. But as I call individuals' names who are here, if you can proceed up to the table where Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Palomino are, they will corral you at that point. From the Dewing Elementary School, Kyla Curley. Stacy Glisia. Thank you. Monica Johnson. Stephanie Kinnon. And Jen Lentini. From the Heathbrook School, Maureen Castiglione. From the North Street School, Erin Anderson. Sharon Cardoso. Jessica Carpe. Jeannie Dunn. Jean Hogan. Paige Impink. Debbie Johnson. Melissa Kelleher. Stephanie Kinnon. Lindsay Long. And Christine Paquette. From the Trahan Elementary School, Judy Boyson. Beth Cashman. Lisa Driscoll. Christine Flynn. Stephanie Frick.
Thank you.
Jane Garabedian. Julie Naughton. Sue Pantolitis. And Lauren Stewart. From the Ryan Elementary School, Kathleen Bardsley. Amy Kayson. Karen Gaglion. Jamie Galinas. Kerry Gibson. Jen Griffin. Stephanie Kinnon. Paige Impink. Smida Leith. Lynette Montiel. Julie Naughton. Marlee Pacolo. Melissa Thompson. Carolyn Watkins. From the Wynn Middle School, Lori Carreri. Letita Wan. And from the high school, Kathy Begoin. Amy Cafferty. And Sharon Pierce. Once again, these are our outstanding volunteers in this district, and they're certainly the people that make our district move, and we appreciate all their help every day.
We're getting a picture right up front here. Todd, did you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you all very much. Our next group of individuals, we certainly want to recognize as those individuals who participate in our senior tax program, and those participants, and I think our chairperson would like to make a few comments.
I just wanted to say, it wasn't too long ago, and I want to welcome Mr. Jay Kelly, the chairman of the board of selectmen here tonight, and the reason I bring that up, too, is that it wasn't too long ago, there was great collaboration between the board of selectmen, the school committee, and our town manager, and our superintendent, to bring this tax relief program to the town. So, not only do it afford opportunities within our schools, also on the town side, too. But we can't tell you how invaluable this experience and this program has been. We get so much more out of it, and we hear nothing but wonderful things about all the different things that you do within our schools. So, I just wanted to kind of give the background a little bit, and Mr. Kelly's here tonight, so it's a great opportunity to thank the board of selectmen, to thank our town manager, you know, to thank the school district. What a great program, and now we're seeing all the benefits of it years later, so I'll send it back to Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And one of the other things about our great work with the seniors in our schools is it gives a terrific opportunity for our students to interact with our greatest generation, and for our students to have that experience every day, to work with our seniors in this town, certainly improves their education, and is something that we find very valuable. From the Dewing School, Harriet Cohen. Pat Doucette. And Sharon Milburn. From the Heathbrook School, Mary Ann Barnes. Carol Friedman. Marguerite Hurley. Dorothy Sampson. From the North Street School, Sue Flamia. Marilyn Mallot. From the Trahan Elementary School, David Barletta. Carolyn Comfort. And from the Ryan Elementary School, Tom McNutt.
Yep, here comes Tom.
And once again, these are our outstanding senior tax program participants, and once again, we could not do our work in the school system without these individuals, and we thank them very much for their service.
Okay, now, we're going right into Mr. Malone, into our athletics.
Actually, Madam Chair, we're going to start with some representatives from the Ryan Elementary School. So, we've had some outstanding events and activities at the Ryan School, and we certainly want to recognize those individuals. If I could have Ms. McGinnis to come on up, that would be fantastic. In our first couple of students, we want to recognize as students who participated in the school-wide book drive and donation to the House of Hope. And at this time, I'd like to have Sarah Johansson and Jasmine Johansson to come on up, and I'm not sure if they brought any of their teachers with them.
We've got some Johansson's. Come on up, ladies.
Come right up. And Madam Chair, this is a terrific example of some of that service work that our students do, particularly at the Ryan School, that are really designed to benefit others, and to have these two young ladies to do this level of work and participate in this is certainly a great example of the kind of work all of our students do. And Ms. McGinnis, I don't know if there's anything you'd want to add to that?
The initiative that these students have taken on their own, just for the sake of doing good, makes me heartened to thank... The future is here, and as I said to their mom tonight, the future makes us really proud and to live in the present and enjoy the work that kids can really do and make a difference for our community. I just couldn't be prouder. So, thank you both.
I have a resolution of recognition. Jasmine and Sarah Johansson are dedicated and charitable students at the John F. Ryan Elementary School, who bring in motivation to share literacy and a love of reading with the citizens of the Merrimack Valley. And Jasmine and Sarah initiated, organized, advertised, and put their efforts into collecting and delivering books for individuals of all ages who are in need of books, and whereas Jasmine and Sarah exemplify the qualities inherent of compassionate, concerned, and generous students of Tewksbury. And whereas Jasmine and Sarah have brought great pride, recognition, and honor to themselves, their parents, the John F. Ryan Elementary School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many efforts of Jasmine and Sarah Johansson.
Nice picture right here, all four of you.
We're going to let Mom get a picture with her, too.
Yeah. Is your... Perfect.
And Madam Chair, we have a second recognition from the Ryan School, and we'd like two students, Melissa Lane and Kristen Romano, teachers, I'm sorry, to come up. And we have a long list of students.
Yes.
All right. Dacia Allen, Lauren Opetiziano. Michaela Day, Adriana Walker. Kimson Nguyen. Morgan Crowley. Renuka Late. We have a few other students that weren't able to make it today, but what this terrific element from here at the Ryan School is, they... Do we have some others coming in?
Yes.
All right. Finley Durham, Ella Logan, and Janissa Sofan were also involved, so we certainly appreciate their efforts coming in. But these students were actually involved in creating a mural at the Ryan School that highlighted the Bulldog of the Ryan School, and if you walk in the front entrance of the Ryan School, that mural is directly across the courtyard by the gym, and if you look hard enough when you go in the front door, you'll see it because the colors are so vibrant. But Ms. McGinnis, would you like to talk a little bit about the mural and the project, and maybe if the staff want to talk a little bit about the experience?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the fact that I thought it was a wonderful idea, so I'll let that speak out.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. It is truly an honor. These girls worked really hard on our mural. We had actually had them participate in it. They all participated by entering into an essay contest. They had to write in 300 words or less what the Ryan School meant to them, and they truly were able to capture that in their essays. So, students were chosen from each team from the sixth grade, and here we are tonight, and having created a wonderful mural for our school that will last for many years. So, thank you, girls.
I'm very proud of that.
We had the opportunity because it was on social media, and then we also were able to see it right away, and some of us have been in the school to see it. You guys did an absolutely fabulous job. We encourage everyone, next time parents come in and you're in the Ryan School, you have to go and see that mural. You guys did an absolutely wonderful job. You should be so proud. Many years, students coming through the school for many years are going to appreciate your wonderful work. So, thank you so much for all that hard work, and that's beautiful. So, now, get together for a nice picture. We've got a newspaper. Maybe we could do two rolls.
I'll do our resolutions. All right. This is from the school committee. We'd like to read this resolution of recognition. Melissa Lane and Kristen Romano are dedicated and progressive educators at the John F. Ryan Elementary School, who bring an inviting and colorful learning environment to the students of Tewksbury. Whereas Melissa and Kristen took the initiative to beautify the John F. Ryan School with the help of some of our students, all of you, by creating a large mural for our school mascot, the Ryan Bulldog, which is proudly displayed outside our gymnasium. And whereas Melissa and Kristen exemplified the qualities inherent of a creative, collaborative, and motivated educator, whereas Melissa and Kristen have brought great pride, recognition, and honor to the John F. Ryan Elementary School and the town of Tewksbury. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many efforts of Melissa Lane and Kristen Romano and all these students.
Judy, nice picture now. Get them all close in, so we can get a good picture.
Smile for your hands.
Yep, nice picture.
Can I tell the parents they can come right up here?
Can I move up?
You can go closer for a closer picture if you're not getting a good one. It's fine. Once in a lifetime.
There you go. There you go. I love it.
Big smiles. That can go on the front page of the Ryan website tomorrow.
That's right. Along with the mural.
Nice job.
Nice job, Rob. As we keep moving, Madam Chair, as you look out in the audience, there is a group of very nice-looking, docile young ladies in front of you, and I'm here to tell you that they are not that. They are the Ladies Red Ranger Hockey Team, and we have a lot to celebrate with that. I'd like Mr. Drewin to come on up, please, and we have a couple of awards specific to the team, and then an entire award for the team, but once again, this team has made our town and Methuen very proud. They had the opportunity to represent Tewksbury-Methuen in the Division One State Finals at the Boston Garden, lost a nail-biter game, won nothing, but certainly put forth the effort in just a tremendous season that makes all of us proud, and the best part of this is they're all great young ladies, they're good students, they're good members of our community, and when they are able to represent all of us out there in a forum like the Boston Garden, it just makes us all feel that much better about kind of work we're doing. The first individual we would like to bring up is Ms. Oteri, the coach, if she can come up at this position. So, this is an easy work, certainly working with students from two different communities and trying to organize that, and work practices on a hockey schedule, and do all those kind of things, but Ms. Oteri certainly has been a great reflection and a great asset to us working with our young ladies, and she is the Boston Globe Girls Ice Hockey Coach of the Year, so we're very proud of her. And Mr. Drewin, I'm not sure if there's any other words you want to offer.
Sarah does a fantastic job. We're so fortunate to have her. Her background and fall playing career is second to none. The job that she does to make our kids feel comfortable every day at Methuen High when they're walking into a new high school or a different building, for them to feel part of what's going on is pretty special. She does a great job with that. The culture that they've created and the sense of team and family with that team, where you have two schools meeting together, she's done a tremendous job blending that and making every kid feel warm over to doing high every day, so she's one of the best coaches we have in our system, and we're lucky to have her. So, she got everything she deserved, other than one more goal, two more goals in the game, so... Other than that, she's done a fantastic job for us.
So, we have a resolution of recognition.
You're welcome.
And whereas Sarah Oteri, head coach of the Methuen-Tewksbury Red Rangers Girls Varsity Ice Hockey Team, is named the Boston Globe All-Scholastic Division One Coach of the Year, and whereas Sarah led the Red Rangers to the state finals at the TD Garden, and whereas as head coach, Sarah's teams were MVC, DCL champions for three years in a row, and whereas Sarah Oteri has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her family, to Methuen High School, to Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the city of Methuen and the town of Tewksbury. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Sarah Oteri.
And we're going to have, we're going to be bringing more up, so Ms. Oteri can certainly stay there. I'm not sure if either the assistant coaches are here tonight, although they should come on up.
Come on up.
Dave O'Hearn and Jessica Greenwood, they should come on up. So, we have two individual players from the team who certainly achieve individual recognition as being both Boston Globe All-Scholastic and the Herald All-Scholastic. Certainly, this is a significant achievement for the sport, for these young ladies. They're great representatives of both Methuen and Tewksbury, but it really is exciting to see individuals have that individual success, but it's kind of their leadership in their... how they approach the team concept that's even more important about these two individuals. So, I'd like Kelly Galini and Carolyn Curley to come on up, please. Mr. Drewin, I'm not sure if there's anything you want to add to that?
They're outstanding players. I'll start with Carolyn. She's junior here at Tewksbury High, over 100 points in her career, played on our, you know, first line with us, outstanding leader here in our school, outstanding athlete in our school, had a great season, pleasure to watch her play, captain, co-captain here on this team, and Kelly is the leading scorer in the history of the program, over 250 points in her career. She's going on to play hockey at St. A's. It was very obvious that different teams would try different defenses to stop her from getting the puck, and she, you know, still found a way to score 250 some odd points. Two tremendous young ladies, two tremendous representatives of our girls' hockey program. Carolyn, thank God, we have her back. Kelly is certainly, certainly going to be missed. Pleasure to watch them play, and they were great leaders for that team, great examples of how to make that whole thing work with two schools, and they were part of the leaders that did that. So, it's been... This team is... Sarah's very, very fortunate that she's got, you know, quality kids along with quality players, so...
Thank you. From the school committee, I have a resolution of recognition. Whereas Kelly Galini, under the direction of head coach Sarah Oteri, assistant coaches Jessica Greenwood and Dave O'Hearn, is a member of the Methuen-Tewksbury Red Rangers Girls Varsity Ice Hockey Team, and whereas Kelly has been named the Boston Globe Super Team, Boston Herald Dream Team, Red Rangers All-Time Leading Score, and was selected to the Shriners Game, and whereas Kelly is the captain of the... And whereas Kelly is the captain of the state finals and will play hockey at St. Anne's Homes College. And whereas Kelly Galini has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, to Methuen High School, Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the city of Methuen and the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Kelly Galini.
Probably make you two.
Whereas Carolyn Curly, under the direction of head coach Sarah O'Terry, assistant coaches Jessica Greenwood and Dave O'Hearn, is a member of the Methuen-Tewksbury Red Rangers Girls' Varsity Ice Hockey Team. And whereas Carolyn has been named Boston Globe All-Scholastic and Boston Herald All-Scholastic, and was selected to the Shriners Game. And whereas Carolyn is the captain of the state finals and scored 100 points for the Red Rangers. And whereas Carolyn Curly, sorry, has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, and to her parents and family, to the Methuen High School, Tewksbury Memorial High School, and the city of Methuen and the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Carolyn Curly.
And we have some more, Madam Chair. I have a list of players from the Division One run-up team, and certainly I want to go through those, but again, this is a team effort and just a tremendous representation of both Methuen and Tewksbury. And their great work has produced a great reflection on us as a school district and also as us as a community.
Everybody over for the picture, you've got to go this way, yep.
I will go through the names. I feel a little intimidated before when I did the senior tax-relief people, but I feel if I ruin one of these names, I might get a hockey stick on the side of the head. But I'll do the best that I can.
Before you go, what I don't think people fully realize is, this team was Division Two last year, and the state changed, so all the co-ops, obviously were a co-op with Tewksbury, they put them all on Division One. So, this particular team moved up to Division One and, you know, loses by a goal to Garden. It's a tremendous jump up in competition, and they answered the bell and had a tremendous, tremendous year for these kids. It was a lot of fun watching them, rooting for them. They were a pleasure all year, and any award they get, they deserve. So, whatever you have for citation, they earned it. They are a class, class.
Mr. Kallus, do you have the names on the citation? If not, you do, great.
Whereas in the Methuen-Tewksbury Red Rangers Girls' Ice Hockey Team, under the direction of head coach Sarah O'Terry, assistant coaches Jessica Greenwood and Dave O'Hearn demonstrated platine work, sponsorship, personality, and character throughout the 2017-2018 season. And whereas the 2018 Girls' Varsity Ice Hockey Team is a 2018 MVC, DCL Division One overall champion, Division One state finalists, and represented both Tewksbury and Methuen at the TD Garden with pride, enthusiasm. And whereas captains Kelly Galini, Riley Cote, Carolyn Curly, and Megan Forbes led the team to unmatched success. And whereas Kelly Galini and Carolyn Curly were selected 2018 Boston Globe and Boston Herald All-Scholastic. And whereas Sarah O'Terry was selected Boston Globe Coach of the Year. And whereas Ryan Quinn, Kelly Galini, Cassidy Groening, Linda Pendleton, Caitlin D. Ambro, Brenna Green, Amanda Downing, Riley Cote, Julie Stenasi, Jessica Driscoll, Tori Schilly, Tori Sweeney, Megan Forbes, Abby O'Keefe, Kalen, Tavia, Carolyn Curly, Maddie, Jo Sted, Madison Little, Alexis Raymond, Kayah Hollingsworth, Michelle Puzma, brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, to her parents and families, to the Tewksbury Memorial High School, Methuen High School, the town of Tewksbury, and the city of Methuen. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of the 2018 Red Rangers Girls' Varsity Ice Hockey Team.
For the time alone, I would quickly like to point out, the Eagle Tribune doesn't cover us, they cover Methuen, you know, and Kayah Hollingsworth was named their Player of the Year, so.
That's true.
Tribute to her. Great job. [applause] Kelly Galini's my intern, she's tremendous. And second of all, I want to thank Mrs. Vogel. We had a pep rally for the girls the day before we went to the Garden. Girls had a lot of fun with it. It was a nice tribute to them, nice honor for them, and good thing to do with our school, you know, show support for all our teams that are playing for the state championships. So, I think it was very nice of her to honor the girls that way. So, with that said, we're ready to go.
All right, Madam Chair. Finally, we have some great opportunities to recognize some individual achievement in indoor track. And at this time, I'd like Coach Malloy to please come up. I think I saw Coach Cusek back there, if he can come up. I don't know if you have any other coaches, but if he can come up, that'd be great. Our first recognition is actually for Coach Malloy, who once again has achieved a level of superior achievement in that he has been named Globe All-Scholastic Coach of the Year for indoor track, so we're very proud of his work.
Yeah, I mean, Globe All-Scholastic, indoor track, Low-Sun Coach of the Year. Our track staff is second to none. I think Peter will be the first one to tell you that, you know, we've got a bunch of guys who do a real good job, and Peter at the top does a tremendous job, and our girls are improving every day, and they work so hard, and I'm proud to work with these guys and see what they do on a day-to-day basis, and it's phenomenal, so. All deserve.
I would actually say that Coach Malloy can coach anything. He's coached pole vault this year. He can coach anything. He's done a good job. Pole vault, distance running, sprinting, hurdles, high jump, whatever he coaches, he's a phenomenal coach. Very well-deserved award. I'll get you back there.
Coach, on behalf of the school committee and obviously the school district, I ask my honor to present this resolution of recognition. Whereas Coach Malloy is the head coach of TMAGS Boys and Girls Indoor Track Program, and whereas Coach Malloy has been named Boston Globe All-Scholastic Coach of the Year and coached four state championships. And whereas Coach Malloy coaches both boys and girls indoor programs through successful seasons, and whereas Coach Malloy has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his family, especially the Tewksbury Memorial High School, and his many accomplished track runners, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Coach Peter Hall.
I think it should be, I think we should say a little bit about, I know, you know, he gets recognized as a coach all the time, but Mr. Malloy is also a great teacher, and he's a great person in this building for all of our students. When we're out in the community, and I know I can say this about all the school members, we hear not only is he with the kids running and the different track opportunities, but he's also there to help them academically, socially, and everything else. So, I think it goes far beyond the coaching, and you are a fine example of what we pride ourselves here in Tewksbury, so thank you for all you do for all of our students.
And Madam Chair, as we continue, we have some athletes that Coach Malloy and Coach Cusek were working very clear with, and we have two Division, excuse me, three individuals who achieved Division Three state championships in indoor track. And I'd like the three of those students to come up. Rachel Sessa in the mile, Michaela Page in the 600 meter, and Krista Strakalerci. But, Mr. Drewin, I don't know if you or Coach Malloy want to talk a little bit about these individuals?
I don't know what to say about Rachel. I mean, she's been up here more than Mr. Sullivan, she's been here more, I think. Phenomenal kid. She set every record we have here in the school in the events that she runs. She's Globe All-Scholastic, Herald All-Scholastic, going to Georgetown to run. You guys have heard all her accomplishments, and on top of those things, she's, as good as she is a runner, she's a better person, better leader in our building, better friend, better classmate, teammate. She's one of the corners that hold this whole building in place, Rachel Sessa, without question. Phenomenal. Michaela Page, I have a feeling that you're going to see her face a lot. She's 80 pounds? And, you know, there's a couple of things that, I see a lot of events, and a couple of different things jump out at you over the course of the year, like you remember this player, you remember that player. I remember going to the state championship, and Michaela is running the 600, and a girl pulls up on her shoulder, and Michaela won't let her body, you know, and the girl comes back at her, and Michaela won't let her body. And the race ends, and I'm like, this kid is tough as nails. She's with the girl's double her size, pulling up on her shoulder, and Michaela wouldn't let her body. She's just a competitor and super talented, and second fastest time in the state as a freshman. I think one of the best times in New England as a freshman star, you know, just, you know, looks like if she could just stay healthy, that good things are going to come her way. And then Krista Strakalerci is our state champion in the shot put, tremendous young lady, signed her NLI this morning, her National Letter of Intent this morning, to continue her track and field career at Stonehill. Done great things in our throwing program, you know, school record holder. Three fine young ladies who anchor our track program and are just good people in our building. Our track program has a lot of really, really good kids, so credit all three of those, those young ladies.
Can I just add one stat that's not thrown out there a lot? In the history of Massachusetts track and field, the most important meet at the end of the season is the All-State Championship. It's all schools, all sizes of schools, the very best kids in the event, and no one has scored more points in that meet in their career than Rachel Sessa. She still has one more All-State meet to go. She's the highest point-scoring athlete in the history of Massachusetts track and field in the most important.
And on behalf of the school committee, I'm going to read this resolution of recognition. Whereas Rachel Sessa, under the direction of head coach Peter Malloy and assistant coaches, is a member of the Tewksbury Memorial High School Girls' Indoor Track Varsity 4x800 State Champion, Relating, won 2018 Indoor Track One Mile State Championship, and is the school record holder for the mile. And whereas Rachel has been named the Boston Globe All-Scholastic and Boston Herald All-Scholastic, and whereas Rachel will be attending Georgetown University on a track scholarship, sure, track is correct. And whereas Rachel Sessa has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself and to her parents and family, to the Tewksbury Memorial High School, and the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Michaela Page.
Can I just mention something about Krista? The shot put is rarely attended by fans off to the side in most indoor venues, and Krista's school record throw of 38 feet 6 inches, it came at the All-State meet. But what's important to note is, in the last 10 years, 38 feet 6 inches generally would have been third place at the All-State meet, and this year was eighth. And so, in the very biggest meet of her career, when our team needed the most points possible, and we always say there's no defense in track, Krista had her absolute best throw of her career in the most intense circumstances, and it went largely unnoticed. So, I think that just deserves its own.
Congratulations on scoring. Hopefully I won't butcher your last name or do my best. On behalf of the school committee, resolution of recognition, Krista Strakalerci. Close. Under the direction of head coach Peter Malloy and assistant coaches, is a member of the Tewksbury Memorial High School Girls' Indoor Track Varsity 4x800 State Champion, Relating. And whereas Krista has named state champion for the shot put, is a school record holder for the shot put. And whereas Krista will attend Stonehill College on a track scholarship. And whereas Krista has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, to Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Krista.
Did you get a nice picture of the, you know, all of you? Nice picture. I don't know how the newspaper's going to keep up with all this next week.
Ladies, this way, please. Cameras over there.
You should give Sessa's electronically so we don't have to kill the files.
Madam Chair.
And it went largely unnoticed. So, I think that just deserves its own...
Congratulations on strolling. Hopefully I won't butcher your last name or do my best. On behalf of the school committee, resolution of recognition, Krista Strakalurisi.
Close.
Under the direction of Head Coach Peter Lloyd and Assistant Coaches, is a member of the Tewksbury Memorial High School Girls Indoor Track varsity team. And whereas Krista has named state champion in the shot put, is the school record holder for the shot put. And whereas Krista will attend Stonehill College on a track scholarship. And whereas Krista has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, to Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Krista.
Did you get a nice picture of the, you know, all of you? Nice picture. I don't know how the newspaper's gonna keep up with all this next week.
Ladies, this way, please.
You should give Sessa's electronically, so we don't have to tell the father.
Can we do these electronically?
Madam Chair, certainly finally, we'd like to recognize the Division III state champion four by eight hundred relay team from indoor track. And at this time, I'd like Rachel and Michaela to stay there, and also bring up Holly O'Leary and Mackenzie Clark as other members of the...
Couple of young ladies that have been up here before, wanna point out that Holly also signed a National Letter of Intent today to run cross-country at St. Ensel. So, we had five people sign this morning. Busy day for us in athletics today. But these four young ladies are, again, outstanding state champions in the four by eight relay team. When our team needed to score some points in that meet, and, you know, you're counting on your relay team, they go out there and set a school record and win the state championship. So, tip of the cap to these four young ladies there, super, super...
On behalf of the school committee, it's my honor to present this resolution of recognition. Whereas the Tewksbury Memorial High School four by eight hundred relay team was named 2018 indoor track state champions, and whereas Rachel Sessa, Holly O'Leary, Mackenzie Clark, and Michaela Page are the TMHS record holders in the four by eight hundred relay. And whereas Rachel, Holly, Mackenzie, and Michaela have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, to their parents and families, to Tewksbury Memorial High School and the town of Tewksbury, now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of the 2018 four by eight hundred relay team.
Great job.
Lieutenant, thank you, Travis. It's important, it's a good feeling to know your school committee and administration cares about us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, I'm gonna turn it over to our student representative, Ms. Grace Morris, to present the Tewksbury Memorial High School report this evening.
Okay, to start it off, we have National Honor Society. Their executive board for the juniors is getting set up, with the seniors showing them the ropes. Many NHS seniors are giving back to the community through their senior projects, and upcoming projects include Earth Day, Flower Power, and Walk for Life. Best Buddies is heading to the circus on Friday the twentieth for the 10:00 AM show. Recently, the Best Buddies prom went very well with forty kids attending, and everyone had an amazing time. Echo is getting students to volunteer for Earth Day and are starting to plan for Relay for Life. Sad Club is having their Day of Kindness tomorrow, where teachers are writing positive messages on sticky notes and then sticking them to desks. Student Council is in the process of planning Teacher Appreciation Week. They are excited for their regional conference, NMS, on Thursday, April 26th, and Saugus. DECA is helping out for Taste for Tewksbury for the Rotary Club. They would like to thank their outgoing seniors for all their work, and they are gearing up for their officer team for next year. JPL participated in the culture fair, showing how to rap a toga, and taught students about Latin curse tablets. International Club is having Earth Day, and they will have ten kids participating on a specific spot on Wibble Road.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Okay, over to you, Mr. Malone, for our presentations this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have the TTA leadership team here with us, and many representatives from the TTA. Mr. Bilode, I think he's just gonna load his presentation into the computer, it might just take a moment, but the TTA is here tonight to give us a presentation. Mr. Basilieri, I don't know if you wanna give a quick intro to what's going on, or while Mr. Bilode sets up the...
Sure. So, the Tewksbury Teachers Association wants to put together a video for the school committee showcasing a lot of the great things teachers are doing in the district. There's a lot of collaboration, there's a lot of teachers doing extracurricular activities, sports, and Josh had also wanted to talk about teachers marketing themselves and...
Okay, we wanted teachers to market themselves with more of the principals, so one-on-one conversations, group conversations, and the video showcases a lot of great things that teachers are doing in the district, and also why they enjoy teaching in Tewksbury. Because at the end of the day, it's what matters, so...
And then after the video, we just have a couple of recognitions and some awards.
Should we dim the lights?
Are there speakers?
Can we hear it as a whole, or are there...
Anybody technical enough to make more volume come out of here?
You can put that mic on, I'll fix it too.
They need it loud for reading. This mic is live, but we don't have a set of speakers prepared for that, sorry. Yeah, that's at max right now, sorry.
Why don't we just give it a go?
Okay.
All right? We try to...
Listen real carefully.
social studies.
Marco Basileir, co-president of the Tewksbury Teachers Association, and I teach high school special ed.
And we are introducing to you today, Eye on Education in Tewksbury, the public's glimpse into what takes place in our public schools in Tewksbury. We're gonna take a look at a lot of those extracurricular activities that are happening on a daily basis, and sports, and more academic features as well, and we're gonna take a look at secret projects.
As well as the AP courses, we have a lot of AP teachers who get the students to do a lot of rigorous work so they can pass the AP exams.
And I think the whole takeaway that we really hope you get is that we're community builders here, and that everything teachers do bring a, just a greater sense of well-being to the town of Tewksbury. I had the fortunate experience this year of working closely with...
Yeah, why don't we pause it? We're gonna, you know, it's not gonna be the same, and we're not doing justice, he's gonna see if we can maybe get a microphone or something. Can you just bring your mic over there to just, is there anything that we could do?
Yeah, we come here all the time, so we know it gets pretty loud, so this is a first that hasn't been loud.
Could you stop playing it just so...
You hit play, Josh, at this, to see if it sounds...
Sure can.
So, we meet several times a week, isn't it?
Doesn't seem like, oh, oh, sorry.
To talk about, first you won't, but also to talk about different students and what is successful for one student in one class, which we've been trying to...
You know, how about we take, you know, this is really important, so we wanna make sure we do it right. How about, we're gonna go look to see if we can get a microphone. I'm gonna move on the agenda, if you just wanna pause that. We'll do some minutes and so forth, so we're exercising and using our time wisely, and then we'd like to do justice, so let's try to get a microphone so that we can all hear. There was so much work and effort put into this, I'd love to hear. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I'd like to ask our clerk, Mr. Jamie, James Cutlass, to provide our meeting minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move the minutes of the March 14, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve the minutes for May 14, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And I'll move the minutes of the March 21, 2018, regular meeting.
Second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. I'd now like to ask our clerk, Mr. Cutlass, to present our payroll.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move the payroll for the period ending March 22, 2018, in the amount of $1,308,215.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve the payroll period ending March 22, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And I'll move the payroll for the period ending April 5, 2018, in the amount of $1,321,659.17.
Second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor this evening to approve the payroll period ending April 5, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I mean, it might be a good time to, at this time, is there anyone, we'll go to Citizens Forum, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak this evening to anything on the agenda?
I do.
Please come up and identify yourself and your street address.
Where would you like me to go, dear?
To the microphone.
Got everybody here, have an audit. So, Sherri's not here, my question was really for her. You're voting on your budget tonight? We are. And I wanted to know, I had asked her after the Finance Committee meeting, what the status was of your activity fees, how much are collected, and where they're going, because it wasn't presented in your budget at the Finance Committee meeting. So, I wanted to know if you're presenting that tonight, or if I missed it, because I didn't see it in the minutes of the packet from before. So, that's part one of my comment, and just to find that, where that's going, I think is really good to have before we go to town meeting. And then just to ask you to take action and not continue to charge activities fees to community service groups. So, it was something we had done before, I don't, I know there's been some discussion about it, I didn't know where it was, but I just wanted to...
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. She's not here right now, but what I can do is I can answer your quick questions. We will, we did have a committee, and I'm sure you know the good work, we've talked about it at previous school committee meetings, there has been a committee that's formed to look at all of our athletic and club fees. So, that committee has done some great work. As a matter of fact, there was a group of us today that they presented to, you know, just one school community, they'll be coming forward, hopefully in the May meeting with that. So, that's how we're moving forward and changing to do, like as you recall before, we did some relief for families, and we put a cap on athletics to really help families and so forth. But that presentation, I don't wanna speak for the work that that committee's doing, but they will be presenting in May, and there could be some changes for the upcoming year. So, I guess I would...
Do you think there'll be a change in the budget that you're voting on tonight?
There will not, that would not affect, no, that would not. The budget that we're voting on tonight, that would not impact.
Okay.
No. And I'm sure Mrs. Matthews, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but what we can do is we'll make a note, and we'll make sure that Mrs. Matthews follows up with you tomorrow, and gives you the information that you're requesting.
Okay, I think it'd be good to make it publicly, so, thank you very much.
Absolutely, we'd be happy to do that. She can report on that the next school committee. Thank you. Thank you. Have we made any progress on the presentation? Okay, we're gonna hold tight, and...
Consent agenda.
Let's do, yeah, let's do the consent agenda, and we could do policies, because those are quick items while we're working on that. So, the consent agenda this evening, is there anyone wishing to take anything off the consent agenda this evening? Any of my colleagues? I think it might be, a lot of times in the superintendent's staff reports, we do acknowledge some of those donations and so forth, and that'll probably come up, but I did wanna say, the Wind Pack again, extremely generous. We can't do the work that we do without our packs in all of our schools, so I wanna acknowledge the Wind Pack for their extremely generous donation. And then also, there's been a group that continues to do really great work, and it was in our consent agenda, it was called the Angels for Autism. This group has continued year after year to do some really wonderful work around that. We really wanna acknowledge that hard work and thank those individuals. I know we've had them in before, but again, that was information that was in our consent agenda that I just wanted to kinda pull out. Would anyone else like to add anything about the consent agenda? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda. Second.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Chair votes aye as well. Thank you. And then, I'm gonna actually turn it over to Mrs. Bennett this evening to review the policies we have this evening, even though we're going a little out of order, bear with us.
The policy committee has met, and we've reviewed twenty policies that are in our packet. These policies are recommended for review and/or revise as a result of legal changes, changes in practice, or updates of language to reflect modern needs, and this is only an informational reading. So, the policies are IK, IKF, IMG, JCA, JEB, JFBB, JHD, JIH, CH, JII, JJH-R, JRA, KBBA, KBE, KCD, KDB, KDD, KE, KHB, KI, and LDA. And again, this is only an informational reading of all the policies that are in our packet, so no vote is required at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. And as always, we put that out to the community as well as our staff. If there's any suggestions, or ideas, or questions on any of the policies that we put in front of you this evening, again, it's an informational reading, a first reading, a second reading before we vote on them, we love to hear the feedback, so feel free to reach out at any time to our superintendent, or anyone on the school committee. Mrs. Bennett and myself serve on the policy committee, but we'd love to hear any feedback you have on any of those policies. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett.
Thank you.
Okay, how are we making out? No Mrs. Matthews yet. Okay, so we're gonna, you guys are really gonna be lucky, because we're gonna go now back to some really great information. We're going into the superintendent and staff reports, and this is always great information that we get each week, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Malone.
I hope I can live up to that, Madam Chair. I am very happy that members of our staff are present. I'd like to update you on our initial look at ways in which we might be able to offset our schedule in relation to snow days. Last week, I submitted an application to DESE regarding a specific plan that would allow us to take two half-days in May, May 3rd and May 25th, and if we rescheduled those as full days of school, in hopes that DESE would give us a waiver, allowing us to move our last day from Monday, June 25th, to Friday, June 22nd. And as of 3 o'clock this afternoon, DESE approved that plan. So, we're very happy that that has now become a possibility. We've had certainly some confirmation from initial conversations with all unions. We believe there is wide range support for this. We do believe it's in the best interest of students and families, that if we're able to create a more enriching learning environment over those two days in May, as opposed to a Monday in late June, we do believe it'll be a more rewarding opportunity for students, and we will be, believe it'll be a less burden on families as well. So, what I would recommend going forward, that the committee entertain a motion that we look at making, changing the calendar pending final union agreement, that Thursday, May 3rd, and Friday, May 25th, be rescheduled from early release days to full school days upon an approved plan by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Would someone on the committee like to make that motion?
I'll make that as a motion. May 3rd and May 25th become full days, and the last day of school is Friday, June 22nd.
I'll second that, Mark.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I have it on the floor this evening, to support the proposal that we submitted to the DESE, Department of Secondary and Elementary Education, to give the school district credit by turning May 3rd, which is currently a half-day, into a full day, as well as May 25th, which is currently a half-day into a full day, giving us credit, allowing our last day of school to be moved to June 22nd, 2018.
But, Madam Chair, just...
Yes, Mrs. Bennett.
With one comment, with the caveat, obviously, that we're gonna receive the approval from the teachers, unions, and association, correct?
Absolutely, so what we're gonna do is, tonight, we're gonna take, we're gonna have a motion, which we just made in a second, we're gonna approve it. It's not etched in stone. This is then gonna be something that Mr. Malone will work with all of the leadership throughout the district. We have many different unions, and we need to make sure... to make sure that we get the support of the unions so that we have the appropriate staff in place for those two days, uh, because it always comes down to the best interest of our students, and I believe that was the agreement.
If we're not able to do that, then the, uh, last day of school would remain, uh, Monday, June 25th.
Okay. And there are several bargaining units, I just want to be clear, it's not just the TTA, which we have here tonight, we have many different bargaining units that support our, uh, students, um, in all of our buildings, so, I, I'm feeling very comfortable and confident that, um, the feedback that Mr. Malone has received thus far is that all those unions are gonna come together and think it's a great day, and again, it's in the best interest of all students. So tonight, we're gonna take a vote that we support those, those days, and then, Mr. Malone will certainly message out, once he gets the approval from all the unions, um, that we're gonna move forward on that and message out to families so they can, um, plan appropriately as well, um, you know, with their families. So again, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve May 3rd, 2018, and May 25th, 2018, from half-days to full days, to give the district credit, um, so that we could roll back our last day of school to June 22nd, 2018, which is a Friday. I'm gonna have a roll call vote on this one, because it's an important vote, so we're gonna start with you, Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. So we're gonna leave that to our Superintendent, Mr. Malone, to follow up with us, we know that we did, which was great news, we didn't think we would have it, but this afternoon we did receive the approval from the DESE, and now we just have to get the approval, and we'd like to see written from all the different unions, uh, Mr. Malone, we'd love to see at least a written thing saying they're gonna do their very best to ensure staff is in all of our buildings. Um, and once that's accomplished, we can message out to all our families, and I think that's really the best plan for this district. So, we want to thank everyone for their collaboration on that, it's not something, people think, you know, you can just change a day, there's a lot that goes into it, there's a lot of discussions, a lot of collaborations with everybody, working with the DESE, it's not as simple as some people out there watching tonight would think it is, but we, again, we always take the steps appropriate to do what's best for this district, best for staff, best for students, so, thank you, Mr. Malone.
Uh, in addition, Madam Chair, uh, I've got a, uh, some nice news from a former alum, Ms. Tracy Callahan, who's in charge of the Step Up for Carleen 5K Road Race that takes place in Andover every year, it'll take place on May 6th this year, but I received a specific email from her recognizing Tuxbury Public Schools, and specifically our staff, as the only town that is supporting that road race with, uh, teams from each one of its schools, and not even Andover can say that, and, uh, that was Ms. Richards' hometown, who was, uh, certainly a victim of a violent crime as a high school teacher in Danvers, and this is a, a great way to, uh, celebrate her life and, and respect all those things, so hats off to all the staff in Tuxbury, who, uh, certainly represent our town and our school district, and she took time, uh, to certainly recognize that we are the only school district that has all of our schools represented in that event, uh, which is very special to all of us. Um, also a reminder that April 25th is Day on Hill, uh, we're working with Ms. Vogel and Mr. Aylord, they will certainly have a group of students that will accompany members of the school committee for a very rewarding day, um, at the State House, and, uh, it's a great opportunity for our students to interact at that level, so we're really looking forward to it. Uh, informationally, from the Special Education Department, we've got great news in regards to our 240 Special Education Grant, and that was increased by the state in an additional $2,200, which will go to contracted services, so, again, great news that helps us budgetary-wise and, and certainly great news for the Special Education Department. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Reagan.
Thank you. Um, this Tuesday, April 10th, was our annual Career Day for our Tuxbury Memorial High School juniors, it was a great day as usual, uh, juniors participated in presentations, they had at least two presentations from a variety of folks in different careers, industries, and services, um, in, in the world. We had approximately thirty presenters, and, uh, the presenters gave the students a viewpoint of a day in the life, the preparation and the ongoing types of, um, uh, training, those types of skills, uh, in those job industries require. So we had folks from the, um, services, the healthcare industry, education, police, fire, business, sports management, you name it, and we're very thankful that they come and talk with our juniors in their career exploration, um, and planning. So, thank you, as always, to Karen Baker O'Brien and our entire Guidance Department, Ms. Tina Sheehan, Ms. Kenan Daniels, and Dave Harn, and of course Patricia Whitehouse for organizing this event, it was very, very well done. Uh, that followed Friday's Job Skills Workshop, where, again, and you've seen the, um, booklets that Ms. Baker O'Brien has put out, where they continue to just expand our juniors' skills as they think about careers and moving forward in their life. Um, our administrators participated in a three-part, actually the third part of the training is tomorrow, a three-part training with Dr. Bill Rebus around improved supervision and evaluation techniques. Bill Rebus is a thirty-year veteran of elementary education administration, Union Vice President, Negotiation Chair, and Grievance Chair, he knows all sides of the supervision and, uh, evaluation process. The PD for our administrative team included all administrators who evaluate and supervise employees, um, in the district. The feedback is just phenomenal, I can tell you that our administrators will be much better at providing, um, very good focused feedback, as well as writing better evaluations, and their improved practice will undoubtedly improve teacher effectiveness for us students. Um, and then finally, I'm very pleased to remind you that twelve of our high school students, along with science teacher Susan Barnett and Ms. Nancy O'Hare, one of our administrative assistants, will be getting on a plane this Saturday to Iceland. This is one of the first of our science international travel trips, and, um, these students will be exploring glaciers and geysers in Iceland. It's a six-day trip, and our own very, uh, Grace Morris, our student representative to the school committee, will be on the trip, so she promises to bring back lots of pictures and do a, a mini presentation to tell us all about the trip. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan.
Um, I just want to remind the community that we do have, um, town meeting coming up on May 7th, and special town meeting on May 9th. So, in our new business, we will be asking for school board's approval for our FY19 school budget number. The warrant books have been put together, and currently we have eleven thousand eight hundred of them at the copy center being printed, they will be mailed out within the next two weeks. Besides our annual budget, which is gonna be listed under Article IV of the annual town meeting, we will have Article 13 on the regular annual town meeting night, and that will be a vote to transfer from the stabilization fund, a sum of four hundred thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, to be expended on private school committee for carpeting at the Ryan School and a little piece of the center school, district-wide roof repairs, a forged, a forged steamer with kettle for the Ryan School, um, presentation laptops, and technology upgrades to our switches. We also, on Wednesday night, have a little piece of Article I, there's a school capital piece in there for seventy-five thousand, and that's going to be for school security, um, and audit done for district-wide schools' security.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Matthews. Does anyone have any questions or comments for, um, anything for Mr. Malone, Mrs. Reagan, or Ms. Matthews? Okay, are we all set over here now?
I think we are.
The floor is yours.
Can you start from the beginning, Josh, is that okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
Barely.
Much better.
Turn it up a little, can you go up more?
Yeah, as much as you can go.
There you go. Let's say, turn it on a little.
Hi, I'm Josh Bilo, I'm the Head President of the TTN, and I also teach at the Social Systems.
Marco Balsillier, Head President of the Tuxbury Teachers' Association, United Church for Specials.
And we are introducing to you today, I am Education in Tuxbury, um, the public's influence industry for TNS force in our public schools in Tuxbury.
We're gonna take a look at a lot of those extracurricular activities, they're happening on a daily basis, that includes sports and more academic, uh, features as well, and we're even gonna take a look at, um, senior project.
As well as the AP courses, we have a lot of AP teachers who, um, get the students to do a lot of rigorous work so they can pass the AP exams.
And I think the whole takeaway that we really hope you get is that, um, we're, we're community builders here, and that everything teachers do bring a, um, just a, a greater sense of well-being to the town of Tuxbury.
I've had the, um, fortunate experience, uh, this year of, um, working closely with another teacher in, in the History Department to, um, co-collaborate and, uh, build lesson plans and feed off of each other's classes.
Yeah, we, uh, we meet several times a week as a team to talk about curriculum, but also to talk about different students and what is successful for one student in one class, um, which we could try in our classes, um, really help get the students, uh, what they need in order to be successful. And it's, it's, I really enjoy it, working with Amanda and the other teachers on my team, because we can, um, if we're having difficulty, um, in one area, we can always get ideas from each other to help.
Um, the team approach helps you feel like you're part of the community, and you're a member, and you have meaning, and you bring something to the table that helps everybody, and, um, I went through the Tuxbury School Systems, and I was actually inspired by my seventh grade math teacher to be, um, a seventh grade math teacher, so, I really, um, value the team approach.
So one of the great things about coming on board at Tuxbury Memorial High School, um, it's my second year teaching here, uh, eleventh year teaching overall, and, uh, right from the get-go, I felt like I was part of, part of the team, part of the community that is Tuxbury Memorial High School. Um, even before school year started, I had other biology teachers reaching out to me, uh, asking if there's anything they could do to, to kind of help that transition, um, meeting with me before, before school even started in, in August, getting me, get my classroom set up, get me more acquainted with the curriculum, the materials that the school had to provide, uh, show me around, show me some of the other resources that Tuxbury could, could provide me, me with, and, and ultimately with my students with, to, uh, help the, um, the whole learning experience be, um, the best it could be.
Collaboration starts from the top, and it works its way down, it trickles on through the school system, it is a closely knitted community of people that have, share the same passion and love for students' education, both academically and socially, emotionally. So, that connection with administration, connection and collaboration with, um, each other, we're on the same page.
Sports and co-curricular activities, uh, help the student become, uh, well-rounded, not just physically and, uh, intellectually, but also mentally and emotionally. Uh, students are able to take safe risks and, uh, experience failure in a safe, uh, contained environment that allows them to learn that failure is not fatal, uh, and as such, they become stronger, um, internally as well as intellectually.
I mean, I have seen kids who start out their freshman year, um, very shy, nervous, kind of afraid to speak in a group, and just through having the community of the track team, um, by their senior year, they are much more outgoing, much more, um, much better leaders, much more willing to take charge of a group.
So, students normally decide to take AP classes in either their junior or senior year, um, and they can decide that by working with their parents, working with guidance counselors, um, consulting with teachers they've had at lower levels, um, before, and all AP teachers, in my experience at Tuxbury Memorial High School, really try to help students as much as possible, they offer extra help time, they offer study sessions outside of school, they really try to make their subject area accessible to students, and really want students to be as successful as possible, because they know if students do well on the AP exam, that's not only a great experience for the students, but it's a good reflection on Tuxbury Memorial High School as a whole.
This is from our Bridges Unit that we were working on last week, um, in fourth grade, and this is a beam bridge, it takes math to a new level, when you're holding everything in your hand, or you're measuring it with a ruler. They're learning about structure, and they're learning, again, the social skills as well, um, but there are seven different types of bridges, and they'll do presentations, and they'll learn those skills. These are the jobs of the future that our kids are working on today, uh, technology and sciences, and, and education for those fields, um, are all the future, future jobs that our, our kids need, the skills, the team building, the collaboration, but they also need the fine motor skills, the hands-on, the ability to persevere, uh, through their projects. All of us are really involved and follow our students, and are invested in their education, not just when they're with us, but when they move on.
I've moved here thirty-five years ago, it just feels like an extension of myself. I've always worked with children, four of my own, uh, who went through the Tuxbury Public Schools.
And it allows our senior students to spend the last five weeks of their senior year, um, working independently, either, uh, doing community service, or working, um, in an externship, or working on a project or research paper, and it sort of lets them see the kind of possibilities that they might choose from for their futures.
It definitely gives kids real-world experience, and gives them the opportunity to pursue something they're interested in, and that could be a positive in that they decide that is what they want to do, or it could show them that, no, that career field is not for them, which is also a positive.
I am a first grade teacher, and I am, April 1st, getting a senior student who's gonna go into education, and she's gonna be spending the entire month with me, and this will tell, tell us, does she really want to go into education? So I think it's a great way for a student, whether it's in an elementary school, whether they're going to Raytheon, whether they're going to another local business, to see, is this student really gonna want to do this career once they know what it really tastes like? So, I think the community getting involved with students at the high school is fantastic, and I feel that more and more that is starting to happen with Tuxbury Public Schools and community, we're just starting to layer each other, um, you know, you're gonna see kids working in town, you're gonna see kids doing events, uh, doing internships at the schools. I'm an elementary school teacher, probably wouldn't have a lot of opportunity to interact with high school teachers, but I do now, because I am now getting high school students coming to my school. So, I think it's a great, it's a great time to be a resident of Tuxbury, a teacher in Tuxbury, an administrator, and especially a student in Tuxbury.
Uh, the TTA, we just wanted to hand out some recognitions to our members and administrators in the district.
We wanted to start off, the TD wants to start off by recognizing, uh, Joanne Ella and, uh, Donald Capiria, for their work representing the ESPS, paraprofessionals. Uh, we have around fifty, or over fifty in our district, and it's quite a few people to, uh, to manage, and a wide range of people to, uh, look after, so, we really appreciate the hard work that, uh, they've been doing over the last quite a few years, yeah.
Thanks, round of applause for that.
We also, um, want to recognize Keith Sullivan and Archie Bennett, because we've got a really strong focus on helping the elementary schools and enriching the science curriculum, so thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Speaking on behalf of the Tuxbury Teachers' Association, I would like to recognize Mr. Dennis Francis and Mr. Jamie Cutlass for their longevity in serving the students and teachers of Tuxbury, and we would like to acknowledge their continued hard work as members of the Tuxbury School Committee, and Jamie, for standing right alongside of him, for saying "dubbing".
The TTA would like to recognize Chrissy Palomino for her longevity, working with the school committee, school committee members, school committee chair, she's worked a lot of collaboration, getting teachers to collaborate with other teachers, she shows up to events all the time, especially at the TTA Scholarship fundraisers, and she also held up signs of us during the, uh, No One Too campaign, so thank you.
And the TTA would also like to recognize Eileen Osborne and John Ware, uh, for their longevity, I'm not sure if they're here with us tonight, uh, however, we can pass the message along, uh, one-on-one. Uh, Eileen's been an assistant principal at the high school for over ten years, and John Ware's been a principal at the Wind Middle School, uh, for ten years. They both served as teachers in Tuxbury, and for many years prior to becoming administrators, which I think, I, again, speaks to, uh, that longevity and just how, uh, committed they are to the district.
Again, the Tewksbury Teachers Association and I would like to acknowledge all the work that Brendan Terry O'Regan has done in our district. She has held a variety of positions. Among them, she has served as a sixth grade math teacher at the Ryan, as well, and a colleague of mine, as well as a team leader. She has been a member of the executive board of the Tewksbury Teachers Association. She has served as assistant principal at the Ryan and the, uh, principal of the high school, currently assistant superintendent, and she's a snappy rest.
The Tewksbury Teachers Association would like to recognize Chris Malone for his hard work in promoting collaboration, collaboration among teachers and principals. Chris values teacher creativity, teachers thinking outside the box, and teachers who strive to be better. Chris's keen decision-making always connects back to the best interests of our children here in Tewksbury.
And the TTA would also like to personally recognize Kathy Carlton for the hard work she's been putting in with the TTA Scholarship Committee. Uh, on May 24th, we'll be handing out eight $500 scholarships. On, uh, the TTA has always enjoyed giving back to the community and Kathy embodies our long-held value that our association has a responsibility to help students well beyond their K through 12 years. Although her work over the last two years seems effortless, there's no doubt that she's been putting in countless hours of her own personal time to give back to the community that she works and that she lives in. Her students, the community, and the TTA all owe, all owe her our deepest gratitude. Thank you Kathy for all you do.
We also wanted to point out something else about Kathy. Uh, Tewksbury is a very strong community. And one of the goals of the TTA leadership was to increase the scholarships we give out, um, as it helps the community that we work in. In doing so, the TTA leadership needed a committee chair, um, that was a strong teacher and a strong communicator, um, in this community. And we felt that Kathy Carlton was that strong person. And we, we saw that with her fundraiser. She was, we were able to, uh, raise enough money to hand out, um, on May 24th, eight $500 scholarships. Um, like Josh stated, the association is very proud of, uh, what Kathy did this year. And it also brought members of the community and teachers together. So. All right. Uh, our second big recognition this evening. Uh, when I became president three years ago, one of my goals was to increase the representation at the elementary schools. In the last twenty or so years, the presidents of the TTA always came from the middle school or the high school, including me. Um, and because the culture and the trends are so different at the elementary school, um, I really felt like the elementary school needed their, they felt like they needed a voice. They needed to hear their, uh, concerns out loud. And plus, the elementary school represents thirty-three percent of our membership. Um, so Julie Taggart was an E-Board rep a few years ago. And she used to attend roundtable discussions that Dr. O'Connor, uh, used to run. She used to express her opinion, always very respectfully, express her concerns very respectfully. Um, and I really felt like she could do a lot of great things for the four elementary schools. So in May of 2016, I proposed to the E-Board that we create a position, a K to four vice president, that would really focus on the culture and trends of K to four schools with our membership. Uh, the E-Board went for it. And I'm happy to say that in the past two years, Julie Taggart has been vice president and there have been barely any grievances at the K to four level because she meets with members regularly, meets with principals regularly, and she works really well with all teachers and all principals. She is encouraging members to work issues out with their principal first before going to the union. I hear so many times that you could have a really bad day and you talk with Julie Taggart for five minutes and you walk out of the room feeling like so much better. And, um, you feel like life is good. So other people often mention she's the voice of reason as well. Um.
Yeah, and this is my, this is my first year as co-president and I, uh, I know, right? Uh, this is my first year as co-president and I really don't know what I would have done without Julie. Julie has just been incredible support to me in particular. And I can't express how appreciative I am of, uh, just the way she does things. And we all know, you know, elementary school, different than middle and high school. We have different personalities, different perspectives. And, um, Julie just brings that perspective to the table. And it is so helpful for not only Tewksbury, uh, school district, but also, you know, the TTA. So thank you Julie very much.
That's all we have. Do you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions or comments that'd like to? Mr. Francis?
I, I just want to make a comment. I think tonight is great. And I, and I think the importance of what all the teachers and administrators do for our kids is incredible. Cause without, without the teachers, everything we try to do and try to propose and everything else would, would just not, not, uh, fruition. So I know we say thank you, but sometimes I don't think we say thank you enough for all you do for our students and the community. You guys are just a great team. Thank you.
I'd like to echo Mr. Francis's comments because we know you do a great job. And, you know, all our kids went to school here and they had excellent educations. It's a result of your efforts. And even tonight, there were three kids here going to Georgetown and St. Anselms and Stonewall, which are excellent schools. And they wouldn't have been able to do that without you guys teaching them and giving them the direction. So, you know, we're a hundred percent supportive of you. And we try to get you the things you need to succeed, the resources and everything. But we appreciate everything you do and we know you work hard. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
I have to say, I do echo both of my colleagues. And I have to say, I've said this before, you guys are our backbone of our school district. We rely on you to teach our children as you do. And it's wonderful to see all the curricular extra work you guys put in. We certainly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. I'm sure all the school committee members would agree. We do appreciate all the extra effort you put in. It doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you.
Well, we sit here a couple of times a month, sometimes once a month and mull over policy and do data-driven information. And when I go to the elementary schools, they always ask me, "Mr. Sullivan, what do you do? You're on the school committee." And then, you know, there's the standard answer. We empower the superintendent who in turn powers the teachers, right? We set the policy and we negotiate. And it's so wonderful to see you guys in here tonight. Um, as my colleagues said, you guys, our kids spend so much time with teachers and it's important. Uh, we have great, great teachers. We have great administrators. And, uh, we can't have you in here enough. I can't say thanks enough for, uh, all you do for our kids. Thank you.
I think it goes without saying, it's very easy sitting on a school committee and being able to be around town and really feel great about the things that happen in Tewksbury. You'll see me often say, there's wonderful things, great things happening in all of our schools. And all of that happens because of our administration, because of our teachers, because of our staff. We're very lucky in Tewksbury. And I, I believe that. All my kids go to these schools and I feel so comfortable. I feel like they're getting exactly what they need and they're going to be prepared to live a wonderful life. Um, but I just want to say, we appreciate everything that you do day in and day out. Teaching has really evolved. For some people that have been teaching for a long, long time, it's not what it used to be. We're asking a lot of our teachers. We're not only just teaching our teachers. Sometimes we're becoming mom, we're becoming dad, we're becoming that role. We're filling different roles for our students, whether it's at the lower level or at the higher level. And there's so many different hats that you wear. And we really truly appreciate it. We know that things change. We know that education continues to become more demanding. You know, we sit here and, you know, even the superintendent's, his job isn't easy either. You know, we're told that we have to do certain things. We may not even agree with them. But we appreciate the support that we get in the town of Tewksbury. We're so lucky. We really are. Our kids really get the best. And you guys are a great reflection of that. And it's easy. Like I said, we talk about it all the time. It's not so hard being in the supermarket because we really can tout all these wonderful things. And you kind of showed some of those in the video tonight. We always continue to do more. You know, this senior project, you know, all these new things and initiatives that we push out. It's just wonderful. And we hope that that continues. And we hope that we continue to be in rise in education here in Tewksbury. And we're very, very happy and pleased with all the staff that we have here in Tewksbury. So thank you for working hard and for putting our students first. We really appreciate it. Stop working on another video and bring another one back. Cause it's all about marketing. You need to continue to market yourselves. I think we say that every year at opening day. We call it opening day here in Tewksbury. There's so many great things. We've got to push it out to the media. We've got to push it out on our websites. You know, take pride in what you do each and every day. This is a perfect example. You took pride. This is wonderful. Get it out to the media or get it out on all the websites, you know? Let's continue to highlight the wonderful things that happen in Tewksbury Public Schools. So thank you. All right, moving right along. That was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. So we're going to go to committee reports. So I'm going to start with Mr. Francis and Mr. Cutlass on the Elementary School Building Committee update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a brief update since my last presentation on March 14th. The building committees, the OPM and designer continue to meet on a regular basis to review and discuss the Tewksbury Elementary School project on items as establishing and meeting project goals and objectives, perform educational visionary program, meetings with faculty and staff, create conceptual design layouts of potential school footprints for the variety of enrollments ranging from two-hundred-sixty-five students to seven-hundred-ninety students in accordance with the approved MSBA agreement. Recent activities include, but not necessarily limit to the following. Shortlisted elementary school replacement sites are assessed to follow. The Trey Hand for two-hundred-sixty-five student enrollment, the Heath Brook site for five-hundred-twenty-five student enrollment, or the Ryan site for either five-hundred-twenty-five or seven-hundred-ninety student enrollment. Conceptual evaluation of site layout and building configuration at the above-mentioned site locations. We are performing site surveys, environmental assessments, and geotechnical borings at the Trey Hand and at the Ryan. Reevaluation of the education program and state need assessment continues. We had a community outreach meeting held on 3/27 at the Trey Hand School. Some of the look-ahead projects tasked over the next several weeks will include, but not limited to, finalizing the educational program based on the district's education program, submit the preliminary design program known as the PDP to the MSBA as a preliminary plan, reflecting findings of current conditions and options for look-add solutions. After the PDP submission, the project will move into the preferred schematic report, known as the PSI. The phase will shortlist options, three or four options, towards a preferred solution to resolve overcrowding, faculty infrastructure issues, and education needs, to name a few. We will continue to review and discuss the owner's project requirements for the purpose of create, generating a project mission statement, instituting an all-encompassing project goal and expectation, and establishing design parameters to develop and evaluate preliminary and final alternatives, or a recommendation for the most cost-effective and education-appropriate solution. After the feasibility study phase, the next phase will be the schematic design phase, which we will provide more details in months ahead. Our next building committee is scheduled for April 26th at 6:00 PM at the town hall. I just wanted to let everybody know, I know that, uh, it sounds like a long time away, but the vote for this project will be at Maytown meeting, which is only a year away. Which means we have to have everything really done by January so we can get the MSBA approval. We will ratchet up, uh, our friends at Tewksbury, uh, Elementary School as soon as we have our preferred option on where we're going to build the school and what we're going to do. So it's an exciting time. It's a busy time. But I, as I tell my committee members, the clock's ticking. We're only a year away. So, uh, there's a lot of work to be done. But, uh, the committee's doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutlass, would you like to add anything?
No, no, Madam Chair. Very thorough, Mr. Francis.
Thank you. As always, Mr. Francis. Thank you. Um, Tewksbury Education Foundation, Mrs. Bennett?
Um, I'll report out, um, what I've done in the past, which is the annual spelling bee. Believe it or not, we're talking about June already, which is going to be held June 11th and 12th. Um, I'll also add, I believe, their meeting tonight to discuss, um, options on a different fundraiser for next year, well, next school year, which will be in November. And I'll report back on when I hear more on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. And Mr. Sullivan, is there any update on the wellness committee?
Just a few things. Uh, National Takeback Initiative presented by the Tewksbury Police Department in conjunction with the Drug Enforcement Administration is having a prescription pill take-back on Saturday, April 28th at the Police Department, excuse me, on 918 Main Street from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The bike rodeo is slated for June 3rd right here at the high school. And the final wellness meeting for the year will take place on May 21st, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
Moving right along, we've already taken, so next up would be old business. So Next Generation MCAS update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, we've been meeting monthly, um, with the Director of Technology, Jason Stamp, and our administrative team, our principals of all of our schools to plan for next generation MCAS, um, administration at our schools. One of the first steps in really the, the, um, brunt of the planning is the infrastructure trial. And as I said to you before, that's really when we stress our technology infrastructure at our schools to see if it can handle all of our students taking online MCAS at the same time. Um, prior to that infrastructure trial time, Mr. Cameron Carey, in his renewed role as a tech, technology network administrator, has worked with our principals to train all of our teachers in that approach again this year. We started our infrastructure trials in late February. That's when the department opened up that window of opportunity for us to do that. And in our first infrastructure trial, um, we, we unearthed, I guess, some internet connectivity issues. So, um, those issues, you know, led by Cam Carey and Brendan Lee, also one of our, uh, new reconfigured roles in network administration. Um, they added some access points to our North Street School and our Trey Hand School. They also upgraded the internet speeds at the Ryan School. We then went into a second infrastructure trial test where we started to see things moving, the technology working smoothly, but they needed to address individual user, um, needs from teachers and students. And they have further gone into a third infrastructure trial at three of our schools to make sure that things are now working, um, well for all of our students to go online and test. So as I said, that's when that, the test is cached onto our server. So we need our service to be working up to speed. We need our access points in the school to be able to handle students going online throughout the building. And then all of those students being able to go online and that our internet connectivity can take that much, uh, traffic at the same time. So we feel really good at this point. Um, we will kick off, right? Coming back from vacation with, uh, Next Generation Trial at the high school for some questions with our students there. And then our formal, formal Next Generation Online Testing Grades Three Through Eight kicks off on Tuesday, April 24th, starting at the Ryan. So we feel very confident that we're in a really good place to do our online testing this year with all of our Grade Three Through Eight students. Um, I really have to publicly say thank you to both Cam Carey and Brendan Lee. Again, just reconfiguring their new administrative role in our tech department has already paid off large for the district. And their attention to these issues, um, early on really brought us to where we are in a short amount of time with the confidence that all of that technology we have, um, is going to work well for our students when they sit down to test.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving right along to the recommendation for French.
And I see Ms. Bezony Beaucheneze here, um, one of the contributors and the lead teacher to our foreign language, um, department. Um, and you, you don't have to comment, but I would welcome any comments you have.
I mostly came to answer any questions any of you may have. But I do want to express the, the richness of the materials that we're getting in this, in this new textbook. Um, the two French teachers piloted it together and compared it to upgrading our current textbook and adding the online component. And it's like playing with Tinker Toys versus rockets. Um, it really advances our ability to move towards the AP in French, which we offer, but not enough students sign up for it. They don't feel prepared for it. And with this, um, this new rich textbook and the online component, we really will have a stronger path to getting our students there. Um, the, the, um, authentic resources are also very strong, which can be difficult to find. They're much more readily available in Spanish. They're much more readily available in Spanish, but in French, it's, it's more difficult to find authentic resources for our students to read and listen and watch French culture and language every day. So, it really is a very strong, much stronger resource than what we, what we are currently using in Discovering French.
So, you'll see from the very comprehensive review that this team has prepared for you, they feel very strongly about this text, the Decord, text by HIA Vista Learning versus the Discovering French Nouveau from Howton Mifflin Harcourt. What I am requesting tonight is that the school committee support the purchase and implementation of a new French textbook series, Decord, levels one through four, by HIA Vista Learning. The total amount would be $25,315.68, and that will require a roll-call vote. I will tell you that the, not only was the team highly impressed with the Decord French series, it is slightly less expensive at a six-year rate of the Discovering French Nouveau, which would have cost, you see the one-year rate there, $4,473. At a six-year rate, that would have been $26,838. We appreciate the small savings, but I think what's more important is the program they're choosing. I like your analogy of Tinker Toys and Rockets. It really fits the bill for a comprehensive French program through AP. And Ms. Beaucheneze stands before you today. She's a Tewksbury community member, but really a wonderful addition to our world language department, and has really grown our French program incredibly since her start here. So, this does require a roll-call vote that we purchase Decord by HIA Vista Learning for $25,000, $25,315.68.
Does anyone have any questions regarding this proposal, or any of the documents in the packet? If not, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this French textbook, Decord, by HIA Vista Learning for $25,315.68.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor tonight, to approve the proposal of the new French textbook series, Decord, levels one through four, by HIA Vista Learning, total amount of $25,315.68, which includes shipping and handling.[921.43][921.43](LAUGHTER). Which is wonderful to put in. This does require a roll-call vote, Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. You have your unanimous vote. We wish you all the best with the new series. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
And then, I'd add, Madam Chair, that this will come out of our Capitol-out latex book.
Thank you for saying that, Mrs. Regan. That's a wonderful account that we have, so we can continue to keep up. Thank you so much. All right, moving right along to New Business. Mr. Malone?
Madam Chair, we have a request from the Wynn Middle School. We have a letter from Mr. Gillespie, the trip organizer, and I've spoken to the principal, Mr. Weir, to seek approval for their 2019 Washington DC trip. They've taken some efforts to schedule ahead to avoid conflicts with such things as graduation. They would leave on Wednesday, May 29th, and return on Saturday, June 1st. This is a traditional trip done by the middle school, with a tremendous opportunity for students to get firsthand experience in much of the monuments, museums, and sites to see in Washington DC. There is a flexible payment option for families, and also, they are hoping to do some fundraising to offset the cost of, of that trip. But they are seeking approval for the 2019 Wynn Middle School eighth-grade Washington DC trip.
I'd just like to say, I can't thank them enough. I mean, providing these type of opportunities, giving up a lot of their free time to provide these opportunities to our students, you know, as we've seen in newspapers and so forth. You know, people are moving away from these types of trips. And again, I want to thank the Wynn School, and I also want to thank Mr. Gillespie. This is great, the way he's coming in so early on it. He was very thoughtful, he was careful, he's taking feedback from previous years and incorporating into the new proposal, so I thank him for that. I just support these types of trips wholeheartedly. I think it's absolutely wonderful what these teachers and staff do to provide these opportunities for our students. Mr. Francis?
I just want to piggyback a little bit on what Madam Chair said. I agree, as you look around, districts are not too far from where we are. Well, a lot of these districts now are canceling these trips and are doing them. And I think that this is just a great opportunity for our students, whether it be Washington or the Iceland trip that was talked about a little bit earlier, for, for science. I think it's just a great opportunity for, for our students to learn what it's really like, some of the things that they can work on hands with, as opposed to just in the classroom. So, again, for all the teachers, administrators who put these trips together, I think it's just great.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2019 Wynn Middle School eighth-grade Washington DC overnight field trip.
I'll second it.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the 2019 Wynn Middle School eighth-grade Washington DC overnight field trip. This does require a roll-call vote. Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Again, thank you to the Wynn staff, who continue to provide wonderful opportunities for our students.
Okay, Madam Chair, what you have next is our 2018, 2019 register period for our four terms, next full year. It is in line and consistent with the calendar that you approved. I'm, I'm not sure if this, the register requires a roll-call, requires a vote. I believe it's informational only, but this is for your information, to see how we've divvied up the year for our students.
I think it's wonderful. Is this something that goes online as well and put out there for, yeah, this is a great information for parents, too. I think this is the important stuff, right, that the parents really don't know, but this would be great in a memo or something going out to them as well, but, yeah, I thought this was wonderful. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Yep, mine are. Thank you, Mrs. Regan.[1180.33][1180.33](APPLAUSE).
Madam Chair, moving on, annually, we, as a committee, have to look at the school choice decision as part of Ed Reform Act of 1993. The committee is required to vote in conjunction with DESE to see the action taken in regards to school choice. I am recommending that the school committee not to participate in the school choice program at this time. I offer this recommendation on the basis of our current status with enrollment in our schools. We're also fully involved in a building project, and we, certainly with the opening of Tewksbury Memorial High School, we continue to have a large enrollment there as well. So, I am recommending to the committee to take a vote of no on this action.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malone. I appreciate the way you drafted this memo. It's probably been the first time we actually had specific rationale or reasoning behind your recommendation for a no vote, so I appreciate the detail in the memo. I just wanted to point that out. I think that's important for people that go online and look at it, too, that maybe have missed the meeting. So, with that being said, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend the school committee vote not to participate in the school choice program.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, for the school district to not participate in school choice. This requires a roll-call vote. Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Also, in regards to the FY19 budget review approval, I have a memorandum to the school committee, but first, I'd want to recognize the hard work of Ms. Matthews in her work drafting this budget. It requires multiple levels of work by her to not only collaborate with administrators in central office, building principals, school committee members, stakeholders within the community, but also work very closely with our town administration to draft this budget and look at the needs assessment, while at the same time maintaining a wish list within the capital planning, and also a wish list within our positions and other needs in the school. So, she's able to juggle all of that and produce a budget that maximizes all of those goals we set forth in our district strategy, and I think are clear and connected to the vision of the school committee. So, we're very proud of her work in, as, as always, this, framing this budget is a year-round job by Ms. Matthews, so I want to thank her for all her hard work on that. With that, at the request of the Director of Business Services, and keeping in line with the town manager's recommended budget for the Tewksbury Public Schools, I recommend that Tewksbury School Committee approve the FY19 budget of $57,344,864.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY19 budget of $57,344, yeah, $57,344,864.
And I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the FY19 Tewksbury School Committee budget in the amount of $57,344,864. This does require a roll-call vote. Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Again, I echo Mr. Malone's sentiments. Mrs. Matthews, thank you for the wonderful job you do. This is not easy, months and months of work, a lot of collaboration with other boards, and we truly appreciate all your hard work on the budget. I think it's a great budget, so thank you so much for all your work. Okay, and then, the last item is the 2000, should be, yeah, 2017, 2018 school timeline for the superintendent evaluation timeline. So, what I'd like to do is just run through this with other committee. We did do the semi-annual review not too long ago, but just for the record, we've set and established a timeline for the superintendent's formal evaluation. May 4th, the superintendent will be distributing evaluation documents to all school committee members. May 11th, the superintendent will distribute and review progress of goals and self-assessment. May 14th through the 31st, individual school committee members will have the opportunity to consult and should with the superintendent to review goals and self-assessment data during the time period, you know, of May 14th through the 31st. June 4th, school committee members will submit their individual evaluations of the superintendent to the chairperson for analysis. The chairperson will synthesize all the data and summarize for the final superintendent evaluation, and we will deliver that final evaluation at our school committee scheduled for June 13th, 2018. So, I don't know if anyone has any question that serves, but that is the timetable that's mapped out. Let's all stick to it and make sure we're all prepared for June 13th, 2018. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, moving right along, school committee matters of interest. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. I just want to thank the voters of Tewksbury for displaying their confidence, and myself and Mr. Cutlass, on Saturday. It was a very, very cold day out there. It felt more like Christmas than it did April. But again, I want to thank the voters who came out, the 1,700 or so voters who came out and voted on Saturday. That's what we do, that's why we defend our country for the right to vote. And I appreciate everybody who came out and voted. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a close race.[1545.51][1545.51](LAUGHTER). And a close race, Mr. Francis.
I know. There was rumors that Mr. Cutlass beat you by one, but when the official vote was tallied, it was actually a tie, just for the record. So, even though Mr. Cutlass is a good sport, and by tradition took the clerk position anyway.
Yes, I did. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, on to you, Mr. Cutlass.
I'd just like to thank the voters, too, for coming out and returning myself and Mr. Francis to the school committee. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Bennet?
I'm okay, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Two quick matters. Next week is the town-wide branch pickup. I know we had a difficult winter here. You can check on the town website. It is Tuesday through Saturday. Monday's a holiday, and there's some restrictions, and they don't come to your house every day. So, if you need branch pickup, I think you have to bundle in the size requirements, and as I said, check the website and see what your street they will be at and what day, and have that out by the curb, and they'll get that out for you. And finally, thanks to the superintendent and the staff. We have a wonderful Earth Day cleanup here in town every year. This year, it will be April 21st. There's a signup genie you can do through the town website, or you can just sign up at Town Hall. You can go down there at 9 o'clock. They do all kinds of projects. They clean up trash. Last year, we packaged and disposed of over 175 bags of trash and garbage that we were able to get out of our, out of our community in one day. So, if you have an hour or two to spare on April 21st, please come down. It's a great event, and makes the soul feel good, too, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And then, I would just like to congratulate my colleagues, Mr. Francis and Mr. Cutlass. I think the people of Tewksbury voted the right way. You guys are very committed individuals that have done wonderful things for the district, and I know you will continue to do wonderful things, and I look forward to continued work with both of you. And I'd also like to congratulate all the other newcomers, all the, all the other incumbents that returned. It takes a lot for people to volunteer in the town. Most of these positions really are volunteer-based, even though, you know, it could be, so I want to congratulate everyone and wish them all the well in their new positions as they move here throughout the town. And then, I also just wanted to point out to the committee is that I'd like everybody to take a look at the different committees that we have. Every year, it gives everyone an opportunity to work on something that they're passionate about, or they have a desire. So, we have the District-Wide Security Team. The Elementary School Building Committee will not change. We'll continue to have Mr. Cutlass and Mr. Francis, because they were appointed. The Policy Review Team, the Tewksbury Education Foundation, and the Wellness Advisor Committee, those are the active committees right now. If everyone could take some time to think through and see if there's anything that they would like to, and send me an email in your priority, because at the next meeting, hopefully, we will, we could redistribute, and people could work on new things if they so desire. So, if you could just get that information to me in the next few weeks, I would greatly appreciate that, and certainly prior to the next school committee meeting. And next up, we have future school committee meetings. Our next school committee is May 16th, but I do want to point out that we have our annual town meeting, May 7th, and then, our special time meeting on, on May 9th. So, we will all be attending those meetings, and then, followed after that will be our regular school committee, May 16th. And then, if anyone has any future agenda items, as always, please feel free to get those to Mr. Malone or myself for future school committee meetings. And at this point, would anyone make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone. We'll see everybody at the annual town meeting. Thank you.